What are you gonna say to this?
I've got to do something in the library parking lot.
Ready to do the morning.
I saw it. I'm in the library parking lot.
Call Sue before she gets here.
I'd like to call this board of selectmen, regular board of selectmen meeting to order on Tuesday, February 21st, year 2023, 7:00 PM. So first order of business, we'll go over the rules for the hybrid Zoom, also in person. If you'd like to say something outside of the audience, citizens, we'll see, make sure that you're a subject matter expert. And if anybody causes a ruckus or is disrespectful, either in Zoom or in the office here, we'll ask you to leave. So and when you raise your hand or if you'd like to talk, please give us your name and address. Saying that, our second order of business, please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm gonna make a motion, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Are there appointments that could be added or is that after wait till you get applications? I think for the HVAC committee and there was interest on the Hop River Committee, I don't know if you've been notified.
No, but if you get us the forms are filled out, we'll put them on the next course of meetings so everybody can see their background. But they can, they're welcome to come in the meetings in the meantime.
Okay.
Wouldn't you say?
We have a form?
We do, we have official applicants.
Okay. Anybody else? All those in favor of the agenda? Oh, thank you. I move to approve the board of selectmen regular meeting managed for February 7th.
January 17th. Good catch.
Yeah. It's big, Nick.
You're not allowed to go on vacation ever again. That would really put me in charge. Disaster.
This happens.
Other than that correction, anybody, anything else? While she fixes that and gets it out to us. So the motion is to approve with the correction, I amend it with the correction of the date to read Tuesday, February 17th. February 7th. February 7th.
Yeah, it's a long, long minute.
It's the wrong minutes, it's not just the wrong date.
Steve, why don't you circle back on it, we'll table it for now.
It's the wrong minutes.
Well, it's definitely on the medicine. Or the agenda's wrong.
Audience, citizen. Anybody for anything that's not on the agenda tonight or if you'd like to speak if you're not, you don't know if you're a subject matter expert.
Nobody's in the chat requesting.
Okay, very good. I need the correct minutes then, as you were given.
Yes, it's February 7th. So the minutes, our agenda's correct.
Okay, so everybody has a copy of the question? Discussion? So there was a motion, let me read, I'm going to go my last motion, now read motion. Make a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda minutes for the Columbia Board of Selectmen Tuesday, February 7th, year 2023. Discussion? All those in favor?
We're going to see the old.
Great, so here we are, budget work time, first up, 2020, 23, 24 budget review, Department of Public Works. We have Director of Public Works, that line with us. Go through what you're looking at and what we're looking at.
So I'll start with the operating budget for the Public Works Department.
Before you do, if you'd like to follow along, so where am I looking?
Yes, thank you. Department 410.
10 of 31.
Thank you. So the majority of the line items are staying the same as last year with the exception of free contracted services are going up because the catch basin cleaning, there's been an increase and also their herbicide application. So that line item went up a total of $3,480. As well, the repair and maintenance line item needed to be increased because the price of treated salt has increased as well. So I put an increase in of $4,548. And then the last item that increased was our professional development, increased to $500. We have some OSHA training that we need to complete with the employees.
Okay, you said there's three items, there's four listed here, I heard you kind of covered three. So contracted services, we understand, repairs and maintenance?
And professional development.
Okay, buildings, grounds, repair and maintenance, went up $2,200. Yep?
I can answer that, a third, where we had that aside, that might have moved over to conservation, I haven't double checked, but that was just like a guardrail at the Hop River.
That should move to conservation.
Yeah, and there was a $200 item.
So we'll pull that out of that and we have to discuss conservation later, we just had a meeting on that tonight, so I have the latest conservation.
Yeah, so that's gonna get moved.
Okay, that's fine, so I have a question about the treated salt.
Yes.
Treated salt, are rose and winter time?
Correct.
If we continue on this path, does the salt we have over there just stay there throughout the summer and everything, right?
Right, it stays mixed. We haven't purchased, normally we purchase 450 tons. We've only purchased 300 this year. And I don't anticipate we'll have to buy anymore, so there will be left over, but.
But how much left over, we don't know. Okay.
And I wouldn't want to just order the remaining inhabitants, since the price, right now it's high, but you never know, it could drop. We want to buy it at its highest it's been in 10 years.
So you're, so this is because it's higher and anticipating, or you don't know what the price is gonna be, so you're increasing it by 2,200 and it's.
Correct.
Does this thing include utilities and stuff in the new building?
No, I think that falls under electrical.
That would be on your line under electrical, so we'll have to redo that one. Have to redo that.
Yes, because that's gonna cost a little bit more.
Yeah.
For the new building.
Shut the lights off in the old part of here.
Maybe not.
It's all right. Okay. Good point though, thank you. Do you want to know which one's the fuel on, huh?
No, I don't see that the price will go up, we locked in, correct?
It will possibly go up in October, that's when the contract ends. So right now, I didn't change any of the fuel, because I wanted to see what the usage looked like based on what we budgeted this year. Right now, it's holding, we're doing pretty long in the winter, but I had increased it last year a little bit, so that has to be renewed.
Okay.
All lines.
When can we, if prices dropped for some reason, because they were so high, they dropped percentages and stuff, can we lock in at any time, redo our contract?
Based on our conversation in the spring, when we were locking in, or last fall, when we locked in. And Mark and I had discussed it about a month or two ago, when the prices had come down. The energy consultant said now is not the time to lend and to wait. So if we see in the spring that the price drops again, we could love to see if we can do a blending with diamond oil and extend the contract.
Okay.
Yeah, we just have to keep.
So this, this consultant is usually right.
Well, it's the new one, we're using Titan Energy instead of talking directly to the company.
Because we switch companies. To the company, anyway, we want to be now.
We could talk directly to them.
Who else? What's the next for you?
The operating budget for the transfer station, 420.
Yep.
Yeah. Again, the prices are pretty equivalent to last year, there are two increases, one in the professional technical line because of the contracted MSW rates. So that went up $6,819.
So that's with Casella.
Casella, we're contracted. And then the other is contracted services, we've added pest control for the rat issue. We have that under control.
Yes, we do.
Need a lot of cats for that.
Can I have a question, salaries and wages, is this not based on three people up there?
We keep it as three, we're having trouble finding someone willing to work two days a week. So it's been advertised.
Okay, that's fine, the two gentlemen up there do a very good job, in my opinion, when I'm there, they're courteous, they're respectful, they help, they seem to be working well together. I mean, so I'm asking, I mean, sometimes we had a third person up there because the mix wasn't quite right with people and there seemed to be a little more tension. And also, the people weren't looking at signs or something, we were having trouble with where they were throwing.
Leaving coverage to the guys out.
Yeah, so the bottom line is, the salary and wages, we should have, we have a leftover in there?
We do, but with operating budget, it doesn't carry over.
Okay.
So we'd like to fill that only, more so for Saturdays, it gets extremely busy and just making sure everyone's placing items where they're supposed to be and we maximize our recycling and and that sort of thing, a third person would be very helpful.
Okay. Fine. Next.
Anyone has questions, we can move on to capital, I'll start with road resurfacing. How we approach that out.
Well, that is.
6187001.
Be the first page.
First page.
Right after the.
Same soap, everything, you got it, everybody got it?
No, that's.
Second page.
Okay, thank you. Are we doing anything with Enchon Road?
Not as far as paving. We have money, that's a different, a different item. This is just for road resurfacing. I have in here to pave Gollin Road when it was originally done. Andy had informed me that just the binder coat was installed, it never was top coated, so I have that in as our top priority to put a finalized wearing course on that road. I've also included the standard, standard items, guardrail repair, the painting of the yellow lines, cracked ceiling and some drainage issues. The new item I, I've asked for is a rubberized chip seal. I don't know if anyone's familiar with it, but it basically is an asphalt rubber that they apply first off to the road. It basically seals and rejuvenates the brittle asphalt, then they overlay with a treated stone. It's similar to a chip seal, but when it's all finished, it looks like a solid black surface. The state's been using it, I don't know if anyone's driven 149 from West Chester to Route 2. They did it about two, two or three years ago, it's held up phenomenal, very minimal cracking coming through. A lot of towns are turning to that as a way to catch up on the road program. Columbia has about 42 miles of road, in the past, when I look historically, we resurfaced about one mile a year. A typical road will last 20 to 25 years, so we'll be falling behind unless we try to utilize some maintenance to extend the life of the road. So by applying the rubberized chip seal, it can add 12 years to life.
So what does that add in manpower or person power, I mean?
It's a contracted service, it's not something we can do in-house.
The cost is $20,000.
No, I'm closing up, that we add in 100,000. And that will do, right now, December, I received quotes, that's when fuel prices were really high. We probably could get a mile and a half at those rates, but the vendor said it should drop. This is.
And I see you're applying 22, 23 unused funds carried forward, $75,000. Okay. Questions on that?
So paving Gollin is one thing, and then other roads would be getting a rubberized chip seal.
Correct. And that's something we'd evaluate after winter to see which ones would be the best candidate.
And you, and you, when you told me about this two months ago, you basically explained that those, that rubberized chips seal works very well on lightly traveled roads or so, it's, it's better for those. If we have to do roads, it probably gives us more life on those roads that are less traveled.
The lower the volume.
The better.
The better. Obviously, on 149, they've used it, that's extremely heavily traveled and it's, it's held up phenomenal. So I think we're only, I think that's the way the state will be moving as opposed to the mill.
How does, how does it compare price-wise to?
Oh, significantly less, so if you see Gollin Road, to just top coat that with an inch and a half to two inches asphalt, it's $340,000. And that's just under a mile. So you're looking at less than a third, quarter of the cost.
Well, I guess I have to ask you, if they're using it on 149, which is a very heavily tra- heavily traveled road, more so than Gollin, at a higher rate of speed and everything, why wouldn't we just do it there?
Because Gollin never, basically with asphalt, you put a binder course down, which is a course of stone, and then you top it with a wearing course.
Yeah.
Which is a smaller stone and they never put that wearing cord down.
Okay, so going forward, when you.
That's the only road in town that doesn't have a wearing cord, so then we could.
That's, that's my next question, okay, I understand the Gollin situation, but going forward, could we top coat, I mean, could we use this stuff on a majority of our 42 mile road?
You can use it on, I can't say the majority, because once a road is too far gone.
Yep.
You can't use it, because it can't bring back structural.
Okay.
Integrity to our road, so that's why, like all our subdivision roads that were put in, you know, late 90s, and they're not heavily traveled, they're at a point where if we do something like this, it will
extend the life.
It's not, you're not looking at like a Pine Street that has severe rutting, that's not something that this can, can fix.
All right. Yep. Thank you.
You asked about Peniclin Road, I don't know if that's your next. I don't know what order yours is, it's the first one.
It's mine.
So there's, there's money left in that line item, $47,857, we're not proposing to add anymore. We just, with a small crew, we're strapped and we get pulled on different projects here and there, so we need to hopefully move on this, this spring and summer. That's our goal, to finish this.
What is this, though? I know it was the drainage, you took, you took up all the drainage, you connected them underneath the roads.
Well, we removed the cross pipes.
Yep.
And replaced them, we have to now reestablish the swales that have filled in over time.
Okay.
And then the lower section from Lake Road up, I think we're reinstalling about eight catch basins and piping to finalize the design that was back from 2012.
Okay, so we'll talk about the manpower as we go along, and there's a few more things you're gonna talk about, but I'm sure that Mini Escalade is gonna come in, right?
That's right, it would be very helpful. The box culvert repair, capital item. The Hunt Road project is still in limbo, we are still waiting review from the Army Corps of Engineers, so we can't move forward without that permit. So that, right now, is just in a holding pattern until they review that. We've included in here, though, an additional 200,000 to move forward on designing two culverts that are, are failing. So if we start with the design, our hopes is that we'll get permitting in place and there'll be grants that come available. And once you have engineering and kind of permit approval design, they will be more likely to get a grant to the town that's ready to move. You know, such as the case, this was, we have $200,000 transferring over from the Hop River Bridge, because that was a project ready to go, so it received funding through the infrastructure bill. The town saved money in that, so we could transfer, so it's not really an increase.
Explain what you're gonna use that 200,000 for.
We have two culverts, we're gonna begin the engineering on, one is on Mock Road, Lower Mock Road, the other's on Old Lomantic. One's a box culvert and one's just a culvert.
So I'm looking at this, it says proposed expenditures, $200,000, which we already have, I guess, from the Hop River Road project?
Right, so Beth, maybe explain it a little better, it's just transferred over?
I got that.
Okay.
Got transfers from one, which we don't need the money for, over to another one. But what we don't have is, so are you telling me out of this year's budget, we're not gonna appropriate $125,000 for anything? For thi- for this? So this is basically a, a zero, like we're at one hole. Except the 200 to wash.
So, so what you'll see on the budget is an increase in this line of 200, and another line will be a decrease of 200, so it's a wash.
Right. I, I guess my question is, when we check, usually appropriate $125,000. Why don't we appropriate next year with the amount of culverts we're going to have to go after in the future?
Are you gonna make it a bigger budget?
Well, you're not really making it, we're, we're not asking for more money, we're asking for the routine money that we put into this, because the transferred money is already money we've appropriated to a different project, we're now moving here.
So the 125 was really allocated only for the Hop River, so now the Hop River, or the box culvert.
It says Pine Road.
Yeah, it was for the Hunt Road box culvert only.
Okay.
So that's the 125, that was what the allocation was, and plus we have a STE grant and listed there, so there's no further money supposedly hopefully needed for the Hot Road culvert?
I understand that, we can take the word.
You're saying.
Hot Road, Miami, if we, if we take out Hunt Road and we put.
You wanna start funding for the Mock.
Over the man.
Any, any culvert that comes up next, that drops into the, that we can't get through the road because it drops out or something.
I guess that's a discussion, if we want to start funding ahead of the design.
Right, you've told me that there's five real bad ones, and there's five or six or seven that are not so bad, but in the future, they're going to have to be taken care of, correct?
The town will have to start fighting.
So my thing is, continue to put into the culvert fund, we've been doing 125, this is a, this fell in our lap, this 200,000, because this federal government is gonna pay that. We saved it, but it's good, so we're moving it over, why are we not continuing to put into culvert fund at 125?
I think part of the reason is because there's grant funding out there, we have to see if it's a reimbursement, or it's, or are they just gonna give us the funding for it, so?
For?
For the culverts.
The culverts, they're.
Really?
They're having trouble spending all this federal money that's coming down, that's why we want to get ahead of it.
Well, I did a slide for a grant for the Old Lomantic.
Hold on, I'm gonna call Richard Bloom. I mean, if they have that.
We can't get permits and we can't get, we're covered up here, we can't actually build any.
So how long do, I mean, that's the hot road project.
Well.
It's always going on since before I started.
Yeah, but the, the, the money, the money appropriated has been going on for a while, but I guess, because we weren't gonna do anything until we had all the money, correct?
No, it's been in the, it's been in the hands of the Army Corps of Engineers for like 20 years.
But if they said two years ago, you have our approval, this is what we designed and everything, we still didn't have all the money to do it, right?
We didn't have all the money, plus we had to make sure we had a certain amount budgeted because of the STE grants.
Correct.
Then we were told certain things were included, now it's changed to it's fully funded, so there's been different changes throughout the whole project and funding.
So it's basically been fluctuating and what we were supposed to do, what we're waiting for. I, I, I just worry in two years, you, we're sitting here and you tell me you need.
400,000.
400,000 for a culvert and, and there's no. Four hundred thousand for a culvert and, and there's no grants to be had and we're back to, ooh, should have put money away for those things.
How much does it cost for a culvert?
It can range. If it's, if it's a straightforward pipe, it could be two hundred and fifty thousand. If it's a box culvert, you're looking at seven hundred and fifty thousand to one point five million, depending on size, stream.
All those in favor of tubes? Uh, I, I don't know. Thoughts?
I like it.
Yeah, it makes sense not to have, it was a blow zone trial.
So, so it hasn't been approved is what you're saying? Because the state has to approve the design of the culvert?
At this point, I just wanted to have money so we could, just seeing what we've encountered with Hunt Road, get ahead of the game and start the, the engineering is not gonna change over the next, right, five to ten years. So if the engineering and permitting is taking three, four years, we need to get.
So the other.
A jump on these.
Right. But the other thing that concerns me is the bottom line on this, state is requiring a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar match to a steep award. It doesn't say to what steep award or future steep awards or, they kind of play this game that says, if you have the money, we'll give you the money.
That was for the, that's for the, that's for the Hunt.
That's for the Hunt.
But if you're doing it for that, who knows what the rules are gonna be later. I'd be similar. Yeah, so I would say if we have to fund it, we should have money in there to be able to. Fund it. It was just the next one, which is, works, Mock Road, Old Willamette. Old Willamette?
Oh, Mock Road is a box culvert. Old Willamette is a true culvert pipe.
Okay. All right.
It's a simple repair.
All right. So make a note, Mark. Pencil in one twenty-five there. Okay. I think we're.
I think we need to get some final, finalization of what the town really needs to fund for the Hop River. And then you know where to go for it because we already have it in there.
The Hop River?
I mean, Hot Road, I keep going back. Sorry. I mean, the Hot Road. We just have to make sure it's what we need.
Yeah, okay.
Because you might have access in there.
And, and which would go to another culvert down the line?
Yes.
Okay.
Culvert of the culvert.
Okay, I, I'll get more information. Please, next.
Um, preliminary cost and design estimates. We're putting in, asking for zero because we do have existing funds in that. That's a line item in case we come across an emergency situation where we need engineering.
We want that though? We, we won't. Okay, we have a balance of fourteen seven. Okay.
No, it's there. DPW capital equipment I've put in for the replacement of the two thousand backhoe. Basically, what we have is we have a newer backhoe that the town uses, um, and an older backhoe that the transfer station uses. So typically what's done in the past is we purchase a new one. Ours will get transferred down to the transfer station and then the, the equipment at the transfer station, if it can be, um, traded in, we'll do that. But it's a replacement. That's down.
And tell all the amount of repairs you're doing on the transfer station backhoe?
Well, right now, the, the transfer station backhoe is, you know, not in great shape because it has been had to hand me down, if you will. So, you know, we're doing the bare minimum to limp it along. Basically, it's needed to turn, um, the leaf composting to handle the brush that's used to compact the bulky waste and the cardboard.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question.
Good.
All right. How old is the newer of the two?
The one right now at the transfer station is a two thousand. The newer one that we're using is a two thousand twelve.
What kind of shape is that one in?
That one's in good shape.
Okay, that's in good shape. So here's my question. Get a used one for the transfer station? Why would you take a two thousand twelve that's in good shape and move it to the transfer station by a new one for down, for the DPW regular, uh, you know, construction work out in the field? Can we get a used one for the transfer station? Is there another way we can?
Used equipment right now is, is hard to find. We try to, try to find a backhoe that's used but in good condition. It, it's one of those unknowns. Could we find one? Possibly, but could it be somewhere where you have to ship it in and pay for shipping? Right now, um, off the Sourcewell bid, that's how we purchased a few pieces of equipment lately. We get thirty percent off what a private company gets because you're a municipality. So it's quite a savings compared to what the, the private sector would purchase it for.
But we're, we're buying new piece of equipment to take a good piece of equipment and move it up as the primary crusher at the transfer station. You know, a mover and crusher at the transfer station.
Well, I mean, it is a eleven-year-old machine. It's in good working order because we.
Take care of it.
Take care of it, but it's still an aging piece of equipment. So it depends on how, you know, if the town wants to spend thirty, forty thousand on a, a used piece of equipment. And then in, what, in five years, you have two pieces of equipment that are exactly.
I don't know if there's, yeah, well, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying. Or you buy a new one and you have two pieces of equipment that could do the same new job for five years. Right? I mean, if, if we left the backhoe that you, the better backhoe in two thousand and twelve, if you left that in the role that it's playing right now, get five good years out of it?
Probably, yes.
Yeah. So now we have two good five-year pieces of equipment instead of two.
It's just any kind of piece of equipment gets used. You know, and, and you're on the back half of their cycle. The maintenance expenses are just going to go up one.
How much for a?
You know, a tie rod for a machine like that's twelve hundred dollars and they're.
Really?
Just starts.
How much would it cost for a year for repairs of the, like for the two thousand?
And that's the thing. We're not, you know, keeping that machine. It, you wouldn't wanna take it on the road. So we are replacing things as they break because we do have a spare that we can run it up and crush. So I would say moving forward, if we're gonna keep that in service, we'll have to put eight thousand dollars into it. And is it worth it?
To work at the transfer station?
Yeah, but you don't know at that point that a head gasket could go. It's just, you're just fixing things kind of like the loader. At one point, do you really wanna put that kind of money into it when it?
I, I look at it as a used car. I, I'd rather, me, I'd rather spend two hundred dollars a month on repaired on a new, on a used car than five hundred dollars on a new car. Because in the end, if they're both running, I'm having to spend, I know I'm spending money. The other question I have, that new machine you have, is that taking some of the workload off the two thousand twelve?
What does patchless mean?
Yes, obviously it, it will do some of the work that the backhoe.
Okay, so.
Used to do.
All right.
But it can't, it can't replace what the backhoe can do.
Okay, I, I.
It's a guessing.
So I would rather plan for it as opposed to a loader that was a surprise and then we had to.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you. Anybody on this?
The dam mitigation is staying where it is right now. We're waiting on permitting to replace the gate. So that money will be carried over until we have the go-ahead. I, I anticipate we'll be making those repairs in the spring. Transfer station equipment repairs. We're actually reducing the amount of money that we have. Every year we put in money just in case repairs come up and we've been lucky that there hasn't been too many necessary repairs. We've been able to do them in-house, which is save this money. So that item will be reduced by fifteen thousand.
Wait. So you have thirty-five thousand in there, so you're gonna take fifteen thousand out of it?
Correct.
What do we do with the fifteen thousand?
Basically, that's helping to pay for any other increases in capital.
Okay.
Tree removal. Asking for another hundred thousand dollars to continue that work we're bringing. Yeah, as it is trees along the way.
So I, I see there you're dropping it to fifty thousand next year.
Well, we've been, we've been tackling quite a bit and by reaching out to Eversource, um, they probably saved us a hundred thousand dollars in the work that they did. So the more I reach out to the tree warden and our liaison, um, with different problem areas in town where I notice we're having multiple outages, I bring it to their attention. They've been so far.
Old Willamette eighty-seven, down here five thirty-four. It's a very bad spot. So if you could get them to work down there.
Fortunately, that's the state tree warden. I can't help him that. I can reach out to, they actually took quite a few on eighty-seven.
Yeah, I don't know. Okay, good. Thank you.
Nobody likes to lose.
And that's pretty much it unless people have questions.
You had a DPW, uh, so I saw something here about, how's, how's it work going down there for the, DPW office and?
Jason's heading that, but the building's in, the walls are framed. Um, I think we're waiting on awarding the electrical. I believe in plumbing, so it's moving along.
Okay, good. Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. Listen, uh, you, your department does a great job.
Thank you.
I, I never, never get a call about Department of Public Works, okay? Um, when I don't get calls, that means they're doing a great job.
I appreciate it. We have a good, we have a good crew. They work really well together.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
We're lucky.
Thank, thank you for. Strong leadership too. So thank you also.
Thank you.
All right. Next is the. Go back to Bob. One here, Bob, to your side. I think she saved us money. Let's see.
All right, Tom Doyle, uh, President of the Department of, Chief Stensky, uh, just got called out on a call. He's down in Hammond right now. Hopefully he'll get back as soon as he can. Uh, I have Assistant Chief Lewis here in case we have any questions. Uh, I don't wanna echo what you just said. Uh, we have had nothing but great help from the Department of Public Works. They have done a fabulous job. Uh, Dan is like a buddy. He, he some breaks, he fixes it or does the best to get somebody in there. Uh, we've been having HVAC problems for the day we got there. And they're starting to get fixed. And it's largely due to his dedication. So I really, you know, called him out and also, you know, best to support, yeah.
Thank you.
You know, we got the split units in and, uh, it's, it's not freezing or hot. We don't have the floor heat going and the air conditioning going simultaneously, things like that. So I wanna thank you for making that start back.
How's the moisture in there?
Well, luckily it's winter. The problem, uh, is if you're in the building construction, there's no insulation between the roof and the tiles. So what happens is that air can get trapped there, the moist air. And that's one of the issues that was causing this. Because we had a guy that was doing some work, look at it, goes, you know, put shoe rock up there. I said, you ever take the drop, the ceiling, put shoe rock up there? Plus, a lot of fuel. But, but these things will help. They have the ability to even identify the NDC. So from a multi-country standpoint, it was a great investment. Okay, we'll start with the ten-year capital. This document is the same and there's a lot of, uh, CLAs. It should say, uh, CDF, I, I went from the documents that was in Jennifer's attachment. So I figured I'd talk to what was attached. You should see one that looks like this. It's, it's the same format as the prior years. Except, I think that's.
The one that's. Yeah, the blue tab.
The one that's folded out, that we don't have here.
Yeah, keep it going. Put back two pages. She doesn't have it.
It's gonna, it's in which it is. In the old business cap.
It, it's okay. Do you have it now?
So very similar to the discussion about capital equipment for the loaders and, and the culverts as well. Uh, what you're seeing there is in prior documents, you may have seen a reference to Rescue one oh five. Rescue one oh five is the, this apparatus that has been ordered and it's in its final stages of being outfitted because it should be uh, delivered to us within the next, hopefully in four to six weeks. It's new, the new name for the rescue is called Splot. You're just playing Rescue and Splot. So this will allow us to go to a motor vehicle accident and have engines and water and tools necessary to work on an emergency like that. What you're seeing on that first line item is we're looking at a twenty-five-year replacement cycle. Okay, so when it says purchased in twenty twenty-two, twenty forty-seven, replacement at a million dollars, we have to crystal ball it, say, what do we think it's gonna cost then? And, and first to his request, we said, all right, take that number, divide it by the twenty-five years and how much do we have to set aside per? You, and so when you aggregate it down and says, there's another line down below that says total proposed capital for town in consideration, that's where those additions add up. Okay? Uh, our engine, the next engine that will be replaced is gonna be what says Engine two oh five. So Engine two oh five was originally acquired in nineteen ninety-one, but it was retrofitted a few years back to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars. So we brought it up to code, if you will, at that time. But it is, it's a, it's a venerable, uh, piece of apparatus. Uh, for example, we had to change a valve on it and just like that said, we had to change the valve. And instead of spending eleven hundred on a new valve, we gotta repair it for eight ninety. So that's the kind of stuff we have to do. We think you get old and.
Can't find the parts.
Well, they pretty much had it made, didn't they? They had a machine. Because these are manual valves you've got to swing with your hand. All, all the new ones, some of your old timers just say, give me a valve, give me, give me something that can turn, has buttons. So when you have a piece of apparatus that, well, you have to keep it going.
Are we still good on the twenty twenty-nine replacement?
Who would that? I mean, it's.
Okay.
So from a near term, um, all the rest are just projections. I, I don't know that we've, none of us can really crystal ball. But as far as the nearest acquisition that is gonna be, something we have to look at, that would be the next one. Uh, Service one oh five. Service one oh five and forestry refit. What we're looking there is the service truck is basically a very large pickup that we acquired, uh, around the time when nine eleven happened. It was for pulling the big trailer. What we're looking to do is to be able to, instead of spending a couple hundred thousand dollars on a forestry truck, something you might see on a California running through the woods, we can use that chassis and apply a retrofit to it. So in other words, take what's currently on it and move stuff over. So that would be where that hundred thousand dollar comes into play in twenty twenty-four. The service truck was in, for about five years, that command vehicle, it goes back to Chief Starkell. Uh, that's the, I think we just finished that, if I'm not mistaken.
The truck we just offered.
F one fifty that's gonna be outfitted to be the command vehicle.
Right.
I'm just trying to make sure that words don't get confused. So way back, probably four or five years ago, when Chief Starkell, he wanted a command vehicle, that's what's gonna be basically the replacement for the Service one oh five. That's what that hundred thousand is.
So that's why that's zeroed out because we.
Correct. Um, then when we get down below that capital equipment with respect to the fire side of the house and because we handle the EMS, your purse tools, your jaws of life types of things, that's what that is. Uh, hoses, ladders, things of that nature, all that's spelled out there. And if anybody's looking for what it. And if anybody's looking for what a T I C is, that's your trivia question, if anybody knows what a tick is. That's why I'm doing this, okay?
Thermal.
Thermal in the gym cameras, very good.
I wanted to make sure you guys weren't just buying ticks, thinking that way you get them free out in the woods, just go walk around and get all the ticks you want. And then gas meters for toxigases, things of that nature. So what we're looking at is a rough number of fluctuating years, but about three hundred thousand in capital, we set aside by the town. So if you're looking at setting aside for culverts, setting aside for fire department capital equipment, things of that nature, that's what that line is with the double bar at the bottom, and this carries out for ten years. So it should look something like this, and it runs out to thirty-two, thirty-three. The next line's down, if it's still on your sheet there, is what we carry, so when we go on a call, we don't bill for fire calls. We do bill for ambulance, so when we get that ambulance billing, that revenue that we take in has to cover a portion of our operating budget. As well as pay for our ambulances and for these things that it takes to make it happen, stretchers, a Lucas device, which is the automated compression things for CPR. And like when we went through the trouble with the heavy pens, they were running eight hundred bucks a pop. And you have to have four of them, and you have to have them on both ambulances, and you have to throw them out and do that, we pick up all those costs. But all those expenses are covered by us. Plus the acquisition of the vehicles, so when you see ambulance six-on-five was acquired in two thousand nine, we ordered that. We had fourteen hundred for a chassis. The people that make the actual ambulance won't even take the order until they get a chassis number and VIN number, that's how backed up things are. So we're looking at that not coming in for a couple of years, and we've ordered it now, but that's in roughly the three hundred thousand dollar range. Our other ambulance is called ambulance five-on-five, so we're projecting pushing that up to twenty twenty-six and possibly another fifty thousand dollars on that. But that's our money, that's not for the town's consideration, we just want you to think about what we've got and, you know, what we have to pay for. And what we look to the town to share expenses on. Things that Beth has been helping out with her department, fuel tank in the back, that's twenty years old. The boiler in the building, the building just hit its twenty-year mark. The HVAC units, we got the, we're gonna update the pending to HVAC, the split units have been sealed, however, the majority of the building has floor heat. The, the things like the good old days, radiators, there's a series of valves, and we're having nothing but trouble with them. And same thing, trying to find parts for those things has been very difficult, so that's what that's alluding to is when it says ongoing valve problems, that's for the floor heat. So the floor heat heats the apparatus area and other large portions of the building. So we're trying to see what we can do best in general. And one, things to keep an eye on, the septic system's twenty-five years old. The water separator is, in the apparatus area, there's some special drains, they have to have a tank, kind of like a septic tank, but it's just for making sure oil doesn't get into the ground. We just want to make sure that that doesn't get a problem. We did have the concrete in the back replaced, that had to be blown up, I guess the tanks started to float, and so the best group, body contractor, and then put some new concrete around that, that was very helpful. And the generator to keep stuff going, that also is twenty years old, so from a planning standpoint, we have a generator maintenance company. If there's some way, we've had some discussions with Dan and Jerry James, who's been very involved with a lot of these discussions. If there's a way to come up with a generator contract in town, the school's got one, town hall's got one, we've got one, I don't know if it's gonna be one down by the public works. Just in general, you know, to economies of scale, there's a way to do that, because that's in a, same thing, it's in a twenty-year lock. We did get an update from the maintenance guy saying some of the controls are. Getting ready to get replaced, so. Things that we wanted to have.
We, you don't have the idea of cost and something like that, how many, how many KW is it kicking up? Thirty?
No, I think it's more than that, it runs the whole entire building, runs our doors, the heat, everything, so I can get you an answer, or again, you can answer.
Yeah, I work, we ran, you know, three hundred people campsites and for military and stuff. With like thirty-five KW, but you put a load on it. So you're probably. Okay, you're out there.
All right, next thing is a. Topic I don't like bringing up.
Well, don't bring it up, thank you, I'm out of office in twenty-four, twenty-five, bring it up when I'm gone. We've covered this and I under, I understand, so I wanted to ask you.
Sure.
How is recruiting and?
I don't, let's talk, cause I get to that.
Yeah, I don't, I honestly, I know that, we all know it's.
We just want to make sure that it's, we're talking about the EMS projection. What happens now is there are two departments east of the river. Volunteer for fire and ambulance, and that's us and Handover, okay, they do about half our call line. He's a young guy in the department, even though he's been around for thirty years, a lot of us are older and we're not gonna be able to do what we're doing. And that's a, a problem that's facing the nation, this is not a Columbia problem, this is not a Connecticut problem. And so we've been doing a lot of recruiting, we had two older people who unfortunately couldn't make the time. Okay, so we had two of forty-five plus come in and they just couldn't do it, one was a lot of family stuff and the other was just work stuff. We've had a lot of success, five or six good cadet become member H types. The challenge is they're starting to recruit, so they want to be a doctor, they want to be an APRN, so if we can get maybe five years out of folks. So when it comes to recruiting, we're, we're trying to rethink who's our target. You know, do we have thirty-year types that started when they were younger? Probably not a lot. You know, the, the Jeff Lewises and a lot of the folks, even Steve, Steve's around twenty-three years, I think, he's a baby, but he's not even forty yet, he's about twenty-three years. I started when I was fifty-five, and I think, you know, we're, we're, we're starting to say things like, wait a minute, can, can we target fifty-year-olds to maybe give us five or six years? That's a whole different way of thinking, you're not gonna get a bunch of teens to come in, number one, the training is very rigorous. The expectations for equipment and all this other stuff make it very difficult for people. The simple answer is for younger kids, they've been coming in, but it takes a lot to get them up to speed, but we still have the problem of people work. So when, you know, phones drop, we went to a fire on Whitney Road and there was two people in one engine and myself in the second one. And so that's why we point out the staffing projection, but the thing to remember is that's for EMS people, the civic station. That's not for your full fire crew, I'm sure they could be fire certified, you can work all that stuff out, but. Any type of recruiting or any type of civic involvement type of thing, we're, we're wrestling with those ideas right now, trying to figure out what's your target market? Who's your audience? Once the kids get out of school and they're maybe in college or late in high school, maybe there's something there, we're asking all these questions. We've got a lot of younger folks, but it takes time to get somebody up to speed, it's a solid five years to feel comfortable, in my opinion.
So this projection of EMS, six hundred thousand, is that four people?
That's a crew of two.
Crew of two, I mean, he's had two people round.
During the day.
During the day.
It's hitting everybody. They're hourly, that's, they're fully loaded, you gotta remember, for each person, on, on a seven-by-twenty-four shift, when they look at the cost up, you need five people to cover three shifts. You got, you know, three shifts with eight hours plus time off and things like that, so the overhead cost for the company, like at VinTech, they've gotta cover that. The average tenure for E M Ts for them is about five to six years. So they have the same challenges that we do, so they're, the tenure, like I teach at Code One, and so we're constantly pumping people out. And the Aetna's and all the other places that take our graduates, they're saying that every five to six years, people are burning out.
It's a hard job.
Burn?
It's a hard job.
Also. Emotional job.
Physical job, try lifting up a four hundred pound patient and not have your shoulder go up.
Yep, so, so that's the capital. And then this sheet is the operating budget. This twenty-months fire department, eight proposed operating budgets, so the prior one is capital budget that town provides the income for. The split here is the breakout where it says grant request and then C B F D part. So what we, what you notice here is a fairly sizable jump on building and utilities. Reason for that is as follows, we've been using a member's husband who's been basically doing a job for us, kind of helping with plowing. He's retiring, so we started to go out for bids, and so we need plowing and we need lawn maintenance. The chief had some ideas and I can share those, listen, hops in, I don't think I've ever been called. Okay, chief, if you wanna share that?
Yes, uh, thank you, sorry about that, uh, back now, hopefully don't get called out again. Um, yeah, in regards to the, the snow plowing and the lawn maintenance, like Tom stated, we have. A member's husband that was helping us out. We also had in the past more members with less call volume that we kind of could, could pick up the slack a little bit. And not to mention, in the past, we had a member in Bud Myers who would help us with plowing during incidents. Knowing that he, he would get the call too, he could come and make sure the. Apparatus apron is cleared off in the parking lot, so that again was a tremendous help. The way I look at this now is, in this world, legal-wise and our risk and liability. We have a, a service to provide and we can't, we have to be a priority, uh, when the call drops. We need to make sure that we can get out, and we, we know that comes at a cost, so when we talk to these vendors. We want to make sure that we are their number one customer. And again, yes, that, that comes at a cost, and I know going through the town, there's been talk before about. Public Works possibly helping out, again, I also know that they are strapped for manpower and then added equipment costs. We think that this option, having it subbed out, is definitely a lot more cost-effective, and again, limits the, the risk liability. Because if something happens where a member gets injured in the parking lot or something, that not only affects workers' comp numbers. But it also then takes that member off the line and reduces our membership that can respond to emergencies and, and help out the town. Let alone also possibly a public person coming on property that could slip or fall or have an injury. That now we're looking at liability in, in that aspect, where if we contracted out, again, it defers some of the liability if we can show that we have been proactive and done the best we can. So that's where we're looking at with, with these numbers.
So chief, I got a question, break this twenty-one thousand down and, uh, what's, what are you projecting for plowing, what are you projecting for maintenance of the grounds?
I am gonna defer that to Tom, cause I think he has the numbers right in front of him, if he could answer that.
Yeah, we had, we got a quote for seventeen thousand, just for plowing. Larry was doing two fifty to cut and the price cuts are about five hundred. So to cut the front, the back and do some trimming and take care of that kind of stuff and mulch. That's where that's coming out of, so could it be less if you go time and materials short, because look at this winter. You know, this, this would have been a great time to do, but if you did fix price, you'd have been writing checks for a storm that didn't happen. So when we're looking at, we, we asked them, what would the target be, it was seventeen thousand for plowing. And then five hundred times, probably in, in the spring, we're doing about two or three cuts every, every four weeks or so, depending on the length of the grass and it kind of tails off. So that's another five to six thousand dollars, so that's what we.
How long did it take him to cut the, the grass?
The biggest problem is the field in the back.
How long did it take him to cut the grass?
I think he said two hours for the short stuff, but then when he does the back, he adds another two hours.
How many acres is the field? One, two, then he cuts.
I would say the front and the back is about an acre and a half of cut grass.
Okay, so four hours probably. Takes time, I mean, I cut my two acres in forty-five minutes, okay, with a zero turn. Yeah.
He has a long cut.
Yeah, well, um. So. All right, so you have needs there. We are, we're looking at bringing on help at Red Park to cut. So we have manpower through the summertime, so we have manpower to do all these other things that DPW does, you know. When, when she sits there, the director sits there and she says, oh, we get pulled away on different jobs and stuff like that. A lot of it is to get fields ready and help out up there and stuff, so we're looking into that, all right. Let me, let me talk with, uh. Let me look into this, all right, I understand the need, absolutely, now the other thing is when, when that member was up there plowing for you. You guys can get out of there in two inches, three inches of snow, no problem, correct? But you'd like to be the first one to plow when the sto, when the snow starts.
That was one of the conditions in the, our fields now, because if you drive over it and it's.
Oh yeah.
And just packs down, you've got concrete, I, I mean, you've got ice on top of concrete and you can't salt, so it's just a nightmare, and we had a snow blow. For the last few years, even when he was there, we still had a snow blow, and we were shoveling sidewalks, even with him doing it.
Yeah, as the snow comes down, I don't know how, what you're asking for is to have. Basically a plow at the ready. If it's coming down an inch an hour, two inches an hour, which some storms will do, you gotta have a plow, plow that almost continuously.
Not designing, that, what if we get, you know, if it's a bad storm and, and someone's in island woods, we gotta go all the way out there.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a very challenging balance.
All right. Want to talk about the other stuff?
Uh, administrative, we were able to cut back. The lawsuit hopefully will not hit us for any more legal fees that we were covering on that. And the operating budget is about an eight percent increase, eight point six, and that just reflects the cost of stuff going up. Everything has just gone up as far as, functionally, we're not adding much more, it's just the prices of the stuff that we buy. Stuff was running ten, twelve percent, fifteen percent, if not more, and it was just, it's a lot of inflation stuff, if you will. The overall numbers were, with, with that increase, the overall was seven point four eight on the, the total number.
So there's twenty-seven six, a seven point four eight?
Uh, with the twenty-one, seven fifty, which includes the snow plow, so if you look at. The twenty-seven six and we're already in a corner, correct, with that increase, that three ninety-six year-over-year is a seven point four eight percent increase.
Okay. And you said the plow was seventeen and the lawn is twenty, it was four, seven fifty, about five.
About five thousand.
Anything else?
Thank you, you know, for all the financial support. DPWs with operational support, I know we, you know, we volunteer, it's our town, it's our, it's our goal for everybody in town. We try to keep it down, we try to keep it as tight as we can, we go to improve it over the years. It was six, six out of nine years, we get a zero percent increase on, over the last decade. That's, you know, starting to get some older trucks, and the same, same discussion. You heard Beth say, go ahead, you ask it, you don't have a loader, so we lost about eight hundred and ninety dollars. Instead of just ordering a new one, you know, we told the guy, just fix it, and it's like, well, you have that conversation, so, well, should we put the new valve in, or should we just redo the old? It's constant back and forth.
Yeah.
And you're like, these cars, wanna keep them maintained, right?
Especially when I gotta pay for them. Yeah, I mean, you can keep them maintained, sometimes that two fifty becomes a hundred dollars, you know, so we get it, but listen. I think you do a great service for the town, there's no doubt about it, everybody out there knows that the fire department, EMS, you guys and gals, whoever's out there. And gals, whoever's out there, you know, you really show love for the town that. A lot of people take for granted, okay, uh, but this board, we understand it and we bring our concerns to Five Pack. We try to give you the very best, you know that, um, so we get, we'll work together to get solutions to this. I really don't have any other questions, anybody? So.
Oh, very beautiful sign, thank you. We had our dispatch, we had our dispatch sign, I had to get squat up there instead of rescuing, I don't want to confuse everybody.
No other questions, thank you very much, thank you, we'll, uh, we'll get back to you, please, change this one. Next. That's too bad, because we usually go good, good.
We're good. Which sewer is speaking to, is speaking?
I'm talking to you, librarian in a box up there, that's what, that's what we got, librarian's in a box.
Do you want to, do you want to do it or do you want me to start or whatever?
Why, why don't I start and, and you can jump in if you want. Okay, well, a- as y'all know, um, we're looking. This round at this year at a six point two percent increase, which equates to roughly twenty-seven thousand dollars. I think you're gonna hear the same things that you've heard all night, unfortunately. Um, this increase represents basically three areas. Um, the first being administration and vendor increases, this is about five thousand dollars of that total. Um, it's known increases for the bookkeeper, the cleaners, bank fees, insurance. The, sort of the, the running of the library. Um, the second area is adult materials, we increased by two thousand dollars. That's in electronic materials mostly and it is like everything else, simply the cost of the product. Um, last, the last line and the biggest is salary and benefits. This includes a ten percent health insurance increase. Um, it includes increases in minimum wage, which we clearly don't have any choice about. Um, and it includes a salary adjustment that took place across all twelve staff members at the library. Um, and then the increase in what I think of as the ripple effects, things like the taxes go up because. The whole system numbers shift. Last year, the board, library board asked us to do, or asked me to do a salary study. We looked at all staff. It was prompted because we had staff members who left. Um, among other reasons citing salary and we knew that we had staff that were considering other options. Um, in part because of salary at least. And we have the knowledge that a professional and trained, experienced staff can save us money in the long run. So we looked at comparisons on a bunch of levels, we compared, um, regional numbers, basically our neighbors. We compared demographics, um, and we compared based on. Uh, what I, at least in my mind, I think of as Anglic rank, it's the, um, state's ranking that you folks talked about. Last meeting in regards to the school grant, it's the AEN GLC ranking. Um, if you're not familiar with it, um, it's adjusted equalized net grand list per capita. So it's a wealth ranking of all Connecticut towns that's used by the state. And used for state funding and used for grant funding. Columbia actually ranks eighty-nine, it's a ranking of one to one hundred and sixty-nine, the towns in Connecticut. When the board looked at all of the comparisons, we found that the salaries were not comparable. And so the board raised salaries to midpoint and that is reflected in these numbers. Um, we tried our best to, to keep it as low as possible, so we did decrease areas as, as much and as possible that we could. Questions?
Why don't you give us a second to kind of look over this? We don't have, we don't, uh. So you gave us the proposed budget amount, you don't have what we currently, this year's, I don't have that, do we have that?
Town grant?
The town grant.
It's four thirty-nine, six two seven. H two, show me what you're asking for. It's not four, they're asking for four sixty-seven, six.
So, I mean, what I'm saying is it says total salary and wages, I don't know, how much did that go up? Like in Medicare, um, there's no retirement, you know, town insurance. That, they're showing me a ten percent increase. I know, I understand, what, what I'm, what, you're not showing me any comparison to what this year versus what you're asking for next year, I'd just like to see it.
Well, we're, we're asking for twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars increase, so. I can tell you that roughly about twenty thousand dollars of that is in the salary and benefits line. Two thousand is in adult materials and a roughly five thousand is administrative and vendor increases.
If you got, divide it, accord, if you divide the twenty-seven, three nine nine by the point oh six two percent comes up four, four one nine one nine, which.
What are you telling me, I'm sorry?
Four, four two.
For a percentage?
No, that four hundred and forty-two thousand was about the budget, been around last year.
I know if you want to know, if you want to know last year's grant amount, take four hundred sixty-seven, six fifty-three and minus. Two seven, three nine nine and, and that's the difference in the grant.
Yeah, okay. Twenty K is thirty. Two sixty-eight and this is two ninety-five, sixty. It's about twenty-seven thousand, that's twenty.
Right, the total increase that we're asking for is twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Of that twenty-seven, three hundred and ninety-nine. About five thousand of it is increases in administration and vendor costs. About two thousand dollars of it is electronic materials and adult materials. And about twenty thousand dollars of it is salary and benefits. So within salary and benefits, that twenty thousand includes the health insurance increase, salary adjustment. Increases, which includes increases in minimum wage and increases in FICA. And social security and all, all that. Fine fee kind of stuff.
How many people did you say worked at the library, just curious?
Yep, we have a staff of twelve. It's a, no, we have a, a four point five FTE, full-time equivalent. So we have, we have a lot of individual bodies, but some of them work three hours, some of them work six hours.
Sue, the adult.
Yeah, we have three full-time.
So three full-time.
Jumping to two ninety-five, yeah.
The only reason I'm asking about this, Sue, is because it says in last year's, the salary and wages was two sixty-eight eight. And this year, it's look going up to two ninety-five, six, so basically. The twenty-seven thousand pounds. And then you have, you know, taxes and everything is under that, so it's not included, you know, I'm just wondering.
Right, so we have increased some of our, what we're, what we are anticipating in our income. And we have increased, um, or we've decreased some line items in. Help to lower the budget, um, and we have decreased some line items with the expectation. And hope that we will be able to recoup funding for that line in other ways, such as grant money. So that we are keeping our ask to the town as low as we can.
Am I, am I correct, total, uh, I, I am six, seven, eight, nine and ten. Equal eleven, is that correct on this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, so that's total for all that. Yes, expenditures in that area, that whole area with cost of increase in the insurance and, yeah, I get it, okay.
It's the, the, you know, the issue with the salaries, we, we felt that after doing that survey. If, if we have a full-time librarian that leaves, we won't be replacing them at what we're paying our current staff. Now, now, you know, so that was a piece of our concern, uh, people were looking at. I mean, we, and we did stick with looking at, at, we didn't look at Mansfield, which there, they recently had a, an add-in for an adult services librarian at. Three, almost thirty thousand more than we pay ours, I agree, I understand it's not the same demographic, so we really stuck with. Towns that have the same demographics that we have, we didn't go the top, we're, you know, in the middle. You know, so it's the same issue, I know, we're all, everybody's short, so, um, so that was, that was. Our, our reasoning last year and we, um, we absorbed that last, we absorbed, you know, that last year, but. It's, it's tough everywhere. And then the same minimum wage doesn't help because a lot of our part-timers are barely above that. Are, are right in that area, so it's the same minimum wage keeps going up, we have the compression wage issue. For the, for the other.
So basically, the library is responsible for column D and column E.
Yeah. Do you, um, other than the town grant, do you, you apply for other federal, state, any kind of grants, does that help you out at all?
Um, we do, some of it's listed on here, we do get a state grant. A state grant, every year they tell us it's not going to exist and then it does, so we budget in figuring that it really will exist. Um, and it can be anything from two hundred to eight hundred dollars, we budget for six. Splitting the, splitting the difference and hoping for the best. Um, we also apply for various grants from various agencies. We've been really lucky that in my entire time here in Columbia, we've received an SBM grant for the summer reading program. And that keeps our line item for children's programming down significantly. Um, we, we've applied for it again, I have no reason to believe that we won't get it. But we, we don't have the check yet. I can also tell you, Steve, that right at the moment for this year, I've got four grants outstanding that were. Not including the SBM one for summer reading, that I have my fingers crossed that will come through. And they are things that we apply to every year.
Good, okay, thank you.
One of the issues with grant money is it can only apply, it comes in as designated for us. Um, so I know of no grant that will cover true operating and administrative costs. So it won't cover things like salary or supplies or utilities.
And for programs or, I, I, yeah, I get it, I'm just wanting to make you, you know.
Yep.
Sue, how much is the SBM grant that you apply?
Um, we, we actually apply for seven thousand dollars and we usually get four.
Okay.
And that is not included in any of, in any of this budget, we just. We figure that if we don't get the SBM grant for summer reading program. We'll figure something out or we'll go to the friends and say, we need, we need more help this year because we're in trouble.
The cleaning contract?
Yeah, I, I checked into whether the town could help out, but their schedule is so different from the town. Cause they clean when the libraries closed and the libraries opened quite late, that I couldn't use my existing personnel.
Well, I guess one of my questions is comparing last year's request, looks like.
It's going down.
It's going up. By five hundred bucks, unless I'm missing something, but it says three, three percent increase.
After cleaning, it went down?
Yeah. So the narrative says it's an increase to get.
I think she meant overall for the utilities, telephonic cleaning, you add all those together.
The cleaning.
The cleaning has gone up, that's been an issue.
Items may look a little off because we are comparing it to the current year's budget and the current year, we shifted things around. So our, our cleaner said they were going to do a three percent increase, our bookkeeper said a three percent increase. Um, and the, what we understand to be the actual numbers are the numbers that we put into this budget request.
Well, that was, if we're looking at the budget for last year, which was fifteen six, we didn't spend fifteen six.
Right, there was time.
So we spent less, so it's actually gone up from what we spent last year.
So how's the usage when it's library? Has it picked up in the past year?
And we do, you know, just. On the, we have asked for $2,000 increase in our, in the ebook section. I, I mean, you know, I use that all the time. But in my head, an ebook should be less expensive than a hardcover book that we're putting on the shelf. And an ebook is about $100. So it's, it's crazy like the way the prices have gone up on everything, but it isn't something that you're not even keeping. On your shelf is, is so $2,000 is maybe 20 ebooks, which is not a lot of books when people are, are using them.
You still carry DVDs over there?
There are some.
I mean, stay in age where people can have Amazon Prime and they can.
But a lot of people still, I mean, I was in there today. I, I just happened to be in there today and someone came in asking for like three. Movies, but you know, did we have, there were things I never even, I never heard of, but. Which we did happen to, I think we had two out of three on the shelf, but. We have, we're not buying necessarily buying new DVDs, but the ebooks is a service that we get. And you should all have it on your, you should all be, all be using.
And remember also that part of the function of the library is that we provide service to those people. Who cannot afford other services. So there are a lot of people who can't afford to pay $150 a year. To prime to get the video. Or don't want to pay Amazon that money. So. There's a whole range of, of. Of things or don't have internet access to be able to download streaming videos.
So one of the questions was, was were our numbers up? You went and asked if we're, we're seeing an increase. I don't want to give misinformation. I believe our numbers are up, but we are still below pre-COVID. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're, we are about three quarters of the way back to pre-COVID. Normal numbers and we're running, I'm pleased to say we're running a little higher than other libraries in the state in that regard. Basically everyone, understandably, when COVID hit, circulation dropped across the board. And libraries like retailer are slowly coming back.
Well, everybody found a different way to find things or entertain themselves. And it's going to take time if ever. If they go back to the brick and mortar. And that's, that's a library, you know, I. Other than when I went in there today, just to take a look around, I probably haven't been in there for six months. Probably because I was dazed or something. It took a long turn.
We are, we are seeing a, a greater increase actually in story time and baby bees than pre-COVID. So that's, that's an interesting.
Like, you know, in saying that. That's not where your children's stuff for now. That's, that's. You covered costs or something. Yeah, the children, our young adults expenditures is less this upcoming year than last year.
Yep, we decreased it by roughly $1,000 because we are anticipating the grant funding. And we talked, I talked with Ms. Megan and Ms. Megan thought she could do it. And thought that was an area that we could possibly adjust because she can. She can create things and, and do her thing with, with a bit lower cost. And so. We, if we found a place we could decrease, we ran with it.
Any more questions? Thanks very much for your time. To this, we're going to look it over and. Talk a little bit. If we have more questions, we'll certainly give you a call or come see at the library. I'm pretty busy. And my car doesn't take those stinking CDs. I have a CD player in my car. I still have a flip phone, okay? And it works fine too. I get calls and I get texts. All right, you just replaced the H-trap in your car. All right. Thank you, Sue. Anything for us? Any questions for us? Thank you, Sue. Very good. Now, your friends at the library or?
We could, so we actually, several board members are working with them. We. We can't be on their, you know. But we are actually have, probably almost half of our board has offered to help them out.
So who feels with the chapel?
The friends.
Well, sorry. You really, any books for a board, please, help me with the floor structure.
If you can get them to do that, good luck.
Thank you, Sue. Take the rest of your night off, okay? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh my God, I was picking it up yesterday.
I played golf yesterday. I can't tell you how bad the ball rolled in the fairway. If you let me bring in some.
Such controversy in that.
All right. So we have three areas. If, if you go through them again. If you have questions, if you have concerns, if you have ideas, you know, please bring it to us at the next meeting. We'll. But on the agenda, let's have a review from the previous, just week, okay? Just a little review of questions. From the previous week on the agenda. Yeah, because we got a vote on the sixth, right?
Yeah, but one departments, anybody you want to hear from? I know conservation has put in a request about $6,000 extra. To work on some of their properties. That's the meeting that was before this.
And how about rec?
Rec will be coming in next week. Oh, yes. It depends on how much of the increase, how they structure rec. That'll be what we'll discuss.
Okay. Is there anybody else we need to see from? I mean, really, until we see the. At the, at the final, the board's end, we really will cover all our bases, right?
We could hear about everything. Next week, I think you'll have a good feel for the.
How about buildings? Facilities, are we going to hear from Dan and Jason or what?
There's not much change for them.
I don't think there's anything. They're basically status quo unless projects coming up. Big status quo. They didn't really make big changes as far as I can see on the.
They're still sticking to their H-trap budget. They're here keeping it, okay? Except they did put in a proposal for a home camera system of $28,000.
I don't think that's in here.
If the all-camera footage is not in there, I'd face it.
Oh, yeah, this is, no, this is no. And it's just 12,000. That's going to be. 28,000.
That's the full fire alarm system upgrade and better. On the Murphy House and the. It's Murphy, I think rec.
If it's the fire alarm system.
It's a fire alarm system.
There was also talk about security cameras.
Right.
Which is separate. So that should be difficult to technically put together. So this is in addition to cap.
Okay, can we take this offline? Because it's not on the agenda number one and. We're just throwing stuff out there and I hate that. Let's just, we'll work on it. Just get it together for us for next week. We're just thinking something. Oh, winner. So we need to talk to rec. She's going to go over the lake budget. Guard, race patrol, game control, and then like any programs she wants to put together. Correct. Okay. All right. Yeah, so that's fine. Okay, anybody else, anything on the budget?
So salaries, that's something we'll talk about in about 10 minutes.
Executive session.
Okay.
Who else? All right. New business, nothing. Can be late, nothing. Appointments and resignations, nothing. Town administrative report.
All right. So. Let's say about David, I put in really government and Lamont's budget and now budget season starts. The biggest impact I've been hearing is that they're thinking of requiring rent control statewide. And that the towns have to put together volunteer committees and create an actual rent control commission. Prods are looking at making it regional, but the lobbyists are heavy against the rent control because they're concerned that. It would actually reduce the quality of the building stock because people that own property would have to. In order to handle inflation, would have to cut back on maintenance of the facilities and it would discourage building in Connecticut. And our biggest problem we had is not enough housing. So to put something in place that would reduce the incentive to increase housing, doesn't make a lot of sense to a lot of people. So that's in the legislation. And also affordable housing is a concern because focusing on affordable housing. But they, they look at the rural towns that we're not willing to make affordable housing without. Without understanding that we don't have public water, public sewer to build.
Well, but affordable housing is a relative term. And here, the best way we can have affordable housing is making taxes.
It's a catch 22 situation. Yeah, I mean.
We keep, you know, by keeping things stable and keeping your tax base down, then people can actually do the starter role. You can have somebody who's a young family. That's why we moved here. We can afford it.
Well, and in theory, all this fiber optics that Frontier's putting in should help connectivity and reducing costs on internet access. But we'll see. The vote is out on that. But I've heard positive things from other towns.
We just got it.
Where, where Frontier is ahead of us. How's it working?
We saw, it was so nice to say goodbye to Charter.
Okay.
Yes, and, and goodbye to Dash. We stream, there's more TV than you can possibly watch. Oh, it's stupid. The amount of stuff that you can watch for like a fraction of the cost is ridiculous.
What does a fraction mean?
So we only have internet, right? We bought a Roku device. So Rich likes to watch racing, so we have to get Paramount Plus. So he pays. Not much.
$7 a month.
It's not much. And then you throw a Roku device, get you all sorts of other stuff and that's not much a year. So it's, it's like maybe.
What does internet cost you?
Yeah, how much is that?
65?
That's what spectrum is 65.
See, mine bumped. Mine was up to 80.
Because you guys.
Well, because you didn't bundle, right? If you don't get the phone.
I don't have a phone. I have a cell phone. It's, um, goes way on my. So Frontier went down, but you know.
And also Lebanon backed out of their solo projects, so we're not talking about that.
Well, it just cost us two grand.
It did. That's all.
That's it. We're putting a toll. There's some correspondence there. For those who made it to the Valentine's Day at Rec Park, it was very nice. Want me to hold a special town meeting? We did that. It was very good. Once again, Valentine's Day, got a little more play. And Rec Park Race raises funds for camp. I didn't even know we had a race. My wife said to me, oh, you had a, a race at the Rec Park. A race. Oh, okay. With your stamp, they call her something. Yeah, my wife said we had a race. It's like, oh my goodness, I didn't even know that. We need to be kept abreast of these things. Also, if nobody saw, I brought in an article that our rec director. That fist put on women in sports or girls glory. Women in sports. The current actually did a piece on it. In the regional section of the paper. Very nice. And I've asked her to bring, she's asked me about summer concert series at Rec Park. So I've asked her to bring that to the meeting next week.
To have it there rather than here.
Yep. She, she bringing in one band is, I saw them at a premium vineyard. And the place was packed and people loved it. And you could buy wine and beer. And I'd like to do that at Rec Park. What? During the concert series. What if Mike, the package?
Mike, Mike can do it.
Yeah, Mike could do it. Okay, thank you. But it was good. So budget. Let me make sure this is correct. Did I say it?
Yes.
Move to approve transfers totaling $2,871 and one cent. No, I'm sorry. Correct. $2,871. The areas listed above here. Boy, the compensation, compensation, do we?
We have a claim. A continuing claim. I think the last bill said it was all only up till October. So I'm hoping it's over with right now.
So it was an extension?
No, it was just part of the original claim. So the unemployment is now sending bills quarterly, not monthly. So you can kind of see what's going on. So I did try to dispute it and it didn't work. So the person was within the claim period, still working here. So they allowed it. And there's hopefully she can.
Okay, the next one, grants and subsidies, is that for the Friends of Model Pod?
Yes.
Excellent. And so that's all taken care of.
And then we'll find that. Okay.
Great. We don't have legal notices to legal. Is that legal? Okay, $2,871. Any other discussion? All those in favor? I move to approve. Reps totaling $642.42. Uh, moved to approve refunds totaling six hundred forty-two dollars and forty-two cents. For these two items, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Close. Action? Okay, I'm sorry. They're quiet now. I moved to pay bills in the amount of sixty-one thousand, eighty dollars and eighty-five cents. Insisting a twenty-two, twenty-three emergency, twenty-two, twenty-three regular. I explained that, tried to find a paycheck. Any discussion?
Condenser units, that's the, here's AC condensers?
Yes.
Fifteen thousand.
The fire department?
Yes.
Yes. We found one roof.
Any discussion? All those in favor paying the bills? Are you to, is it to anybody?
The fire two thousand day generator is a hundred K.
Yeah, it's a hundred K, huh? I was wondering about. Fifty percent of passes, we've been, hundred K. Anybody can cover any of that up there?
Other than that chat, that's it.
What number comments?
Only one. Have we ever looked into solar street lamps for our streetlights? We ought to have a piece on the feasibility of them. I don't know if they've gotten good or not yet. Actually stay on as long as.
I know, we want it to be bright enough. Imagine.
I just saw, I happened to get a, a thing, because we do solar signs. And so I got, and they have solar street lamps, I'm just like.
Then we could check into it, I, I bet.
I don't know, well, I don't think it's the brightness, I don't think it's more in the long term, will it be behind the lights?
Or if you have three rainy nights in a row, you now have no cat or streetlight.
Right, that, that would be, but if you can tie in electricity and reduce the amount.
How many pay for a street lamp?
It's like a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month.
How many do we have?
But they're here, they look at, they speak at me every.
Multiple, there's multiple.
Yeah, every major intersection has a street lamp.
There's one at the end of my drive. I don't know how it stays on, you don't get any electricity.
Just, it's just a thought.
I actually think my wife's ex-boyfriend, who worked for CLMP, put it there as a, as a currency, and yet it costs the town money.
That wasn't a currency.
I have, if I have, it's coming out of sun. All right, well, other than that, any other board member comments? No? Okay, so at this time, I would like to suspend the regular meeting and go into executive session. And I would ask that everybody up there, you let go. My partner, my neighbor, and then, so we're allowed invited to stay. And Mark Walter invited to stay. So I'll cut off the. At this time, we're gonna adjourn the executive session and enter back into the regular board of selectmen meeting.
At nine thirty-four.
Do we have to go on anything? No? Excellent. Just, we're all set, just, all those in favor of adjourning?
At nine thirty-five.